Article Two.
Need a motion by the Board of Select?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Ms. Roy?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $27,000 for line number 61 ambulance billing of Article Four of the annual town meeting of May 14th, 2018, to be added to the $7,500 previously appropriated for this purpose for a total of $34,500.
It's been moved and seconded. Do you want to care to explain the article?
Mr. Moderator, I'm going to ask that our fire chief explain the article.
Jason Mavarez, Fire Chief. The Fire Department always handled, previously the Fire Department handled ambulance billing in-house. Our administrative assistant did all of our billing. About two months ago, she announced her retirement. When she did that, we realized that we had a big vacuum there of someone who was capable of doing that. Even the time to train someone to do it was extremely limited. So I began to look at outsourcing ambulance billing. I reached out to four different companies, and I started off by just asking them projections of what they anticipated they would bring in for Halifax if they were to do billing. What we found, almost across the board, a potential of a $265,000 increase in revenue if we were to outsource that. I was a little surprised that, you know, I know we've been doing a great job with ambulance billing, and Patty does an outstanding job. So I asked them the reason why. And what it is, is because they have different tools to manage the deductible. Some insure, most people now who are choosing an insurance policy choose a high deductible on the front end. What happens is, we, when we go out to bill for our ambulance transport, the insurance company applies that deductible towards our bill and only gives us the portion that, gives us the portion minus the deductible. We then send out a series of three bills, ask people to pay their portion, and, you know, a lot of the times that we have not been seeing people reaching in their pocket and pay their portion, so we end up eating the entire deductible. With these larger ambulance billing companies, they're able to monitor when the deductible hits insurance and try to have the hospital or some other entity eat up that deductible and not have the town always responsible for it. So they can, they balance out when they actually send the bills. We have no way of doing that at all in-house. We requested four companies, quotes from four companies. Three of them came back at 4%. That would mean they would be entitled to 4% of the revenue that they take in. And one company called Comstar came in at 2.75. They are one of the largest ambulance billing companies in the state, so I anticipate that that's why they were able to come in quite a bit lower than, than others. We decided that it would be best to move forward with a agreement with Comstar, enter into a two-year contract. The increase that we're asking for tonight is to be able to pay the Comstar bills, which is the 2%. Currently, we only, we only had enough in the line item to cover what it costs for, to us to purchase our own in-house software, but now we need enough to pay the ambulance billing company. So that's why we're asking for the increase. I should note that as we outsource this, we've also cut the position. So we've cut the position down from 36 hours a week to 32 hours per week to reflect a reduction in workload.
Thank you, Chief. Finance Committee's recommendation on Article Two.
The Finance Committee recommends.
It's been moved and seconded, and Finance Committee recommends. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of Article Two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed.
No.
Passes by majority. Next article.
Article One.
Article One.
Okay, I clearly pulled the short straw.
Hold on. Okay, Article One being moved by the select persons.
Yeah.
Ms. Roy?
I move that the town vote to appropriate $1,500,000 to the expended under the direction of the Halifax Municipal and School Committee member for repairs, renovations, and expansions of the Pope's Tavern, including the building, associated infrastructure, and grounds located at 506 Plumistry, including but not limited to any architecture, engineering, or administrative work associated with this project, the project. Such amounts to be expended in addition to the $2 million previously appropriated for this project. That to meet this additional appropriation, the town treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow said amount under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, or pursuant to any other enabling authority.
It's been moved and seconded. Could you speak to the second article, Ms. Roy?
Yes, yes. In May of 2016, at our annual town meeting, the town of Halifax voted to fund a renovation project for our senior center. At that time, based on conceptual drawings, the estimated cost of the project was approximately $1.7 million. To cover contingency costs, $2 million was requested and approved. We were told by the architect that it was sufficient funding to complete the project. Shortly after town meeting, the architect was ordered by our Building Committee to complete the construction drawings, which would allow us to formally go out to bid. Once the construction drawings were completed, the architect had now, could now run estimates on, based on the working drawings. In April, the Board of Selectmen learned that the new estimate of cost was approximately $2.5 million. We were all shocked that the project had increased so dramatically. There was a discussion with the Building Committee, the architect, and the Board of Selectmen of whether the scope of work could be reduced to have the price stay within the approved $2 million. Although we knew that the project was the most conservative renovation in addition that we could have done, we still needed to look at cost reductions. The architect, architect worked on a plan and presented them the following month. The option to stay within the $2 million budget would still call for the addition for the large meeting room, but the existing building would remain as it is today. We were told that the major cost of this project is renovation of that old building. To spend $2 million and still have a senior center that has steep stairs, poor wiring, old windows, and roofing did not make sense to us. Again, this was a very conservative renovation in addition project. The Building Committee can go into more details of the many meetings that took place in order to work on the best plans, but the decision was made to go out to bid with the project intact with a few alternates. It was the only way to get a definitive number. And when the town had gone out to bid last year for the elementary school projects, the bids had come in about $2.3 million under budget, represented about 30% lower than the original estimated cost. Our hope was that the same could happen. And in the worst-case scenario, in our minds at the time, was that we would need to request $500,000 in additional funding. Not good at all, and I can assure you that none of us were happy about the situation, but given the choices, we needed to have solid numbers to present to you, the taxpayers. Last Monday, the bids were opened, and the lowest bid without alternates was, or contingency, was $2.75 million. Adding in the construction contingency and other miscellaneous items brought the project to a total of $3.5 million. This was devastating news. How did a project 15 months ago, that had been estimated costing us $2 million, jump to $3.5 million? How could this possibly happen? And we are being told by the OPM and the architect that economic conditions of the construction market is what's driving the price. And I will leave it up to the experts in this field to explain the detailed construction costs of the project. Shortly, you will hear from our Building Committee. And we also have the architect and the OPM here to answer any questions that you may have about the whole process or the project itself. As most of you know, the town has tried for many years to provide our seniors with, the seniors of our community with a functional senior center. To save time, I won't go into the specific projects that were brought before this body, but for almost 20 years, it's been on the forefront. And we all are very appreciative the town had approved the $2 million project. At the recommendation of our Finance Committee, town meeting made the decision to have a debt payment made within the Proposition Two and a Half levy, which meant the town could only, could not tax over the Proposition Two and a Half law to make the debt payment. Now that the price before us is $3.5 million, we are all in a very difficult position. Unfortunately, the price of construction is not going to decrease, and today is the least expensive this project is going to cost us. I know a question that you all may be thinking is, for $3.5 million, we should be able to build something brand-new for that. Yes, but seven years ago, town meeting was asked to build a brand-new meeting on the, a brand-new building on the existing land that Pope's Tavern occupies today. The price at the time was $3 million. Now neither the residents that attended that town meeting that year vote no on the project, but they didn't even allow the paid OPM to present the project at town meeting, so it was not supported at all. Given the economic construction environment today, I am not sure what the price would be for a brand-new building, but I can pretty much guarantee you it would cost a lot more than it did seven years ago. And I also know that some of you are thinking about, perhaps we should look at a metal building. Well, a few years ago, we looked into a freestanding metal building, and John Campbell, the Chair of our Building Committee, will verify that back then it was estimated at $2 million. I also know that many of you are probably thinking, for $3.5 million, you could build a castle. But unfortunately, cities and towns are at the mercy of the Massachusetts prevailing wage in OPM requirements. This drives the cost of any construction far beyond what a private construction project would be. It is totally unfair, and it adds to all of our frustration. And we recognize that given the new numbers, you simply cannot support this project. Again, this is the least expensive this project will ever be, but if you feel that you can support it, we can explain to you how it can be financed. So since May of 2016, we, the taxpayers, authorize the town to borrow the original $2 million, the residents here today will need to authorize the borrowing of the additional $1.5 million. Those loan payments will be paid through a normal tax levy and would not require Proposition Two and a Half debt exclusion override. The debt would be financed over 20 years, with the first payment being an additional $115 per year on the average valued home in Halifax. There was a payment schedule on the last page of the handout that was given out, and I will now turn it over to any of the other selectmen or Building Committee that wants to make a comment.
Speaking for myself, this has been the most frustrating project I've ever had anything to do with. It has kept going up and up, and unfortunately, we're in a market now that we couldn't even get bids on certain aspects of the project, so it would become the general contractor's issue to carry and take care of. This is not going to go away. It is not going to get better. Keeping in mind, we're not, the $115 represents the entire amount, correct, of the two point, of the $3.5 million? So take a look at your, of the chart. I mean, nobody's happy about this. I can't even begin to express the frustration that everybody has experienced through this whole project. The consensus is, at least for us, is that we need to do something for the senior center. It's long overdue. We should have done this years ago. There was all kinds of debate on various projects. At this point, there's no point in even going back into all of them. We've got what we've got. We take care of a building, we provide for our seniors, and it's not just a senior center, it's a community center as well. Space will be made available to different town organizations. The whole process here was to, and thinking was to incorporate the entire town and get use out of it for everybody. I'm on a fixed income, too. I'm retired. Everybody takes a little pain in this, we all get it. Nothing's for free. Everybody suffers. If we're going to be a community, we have to be a community, and we need to look at everybody. I guess that's about it. I think everybody's mind here is pretty much made up. I don't think anybody's going to sway anybody here tonight. I'm sorry? No, no, I understand. I was going to turn it over to John, but I was going to say, as far as us debating it, I, I think that's, at least for me, I don't know where else we can go with this. But I'd like John Campbell, if he will now, come up and explain where he's at with this.
Fifteen years later, I figure this is one of the best plans that we have to offer. I put this little booklet together to, to explain what we did to the building and what's going to happen to it. If we start with the front cover, that front of the building does not change at all. The handicap ramp is coming off, and there'll be a little porch on there. If you go to page three, it's the east, east-facing, that's the, facing the old police station. And you see that little dotted line right down through the middle? To the left of that dotted line is the new construction. To the right is the old Pope's Tavern. As you can see, the handicap ramp will come up to the center of that building, of the new construction, and that will be the daily door that will be used in and out of the Pope's Tavern. The three, uh, four windows in that little jet there, that's the kitchen. And the big room is to the left. In the high tower on there is the three-floor elevator. If we go to the next page, it shows the South Street-facing side. And there again, it shows the new construction to the right and the old construction to the left. It's basically pretty, pretty close to that. We had, we had planned to put the kitchen on that side, but we were too close to the road, so that, that building all stays the same. The next elevation is the back of the building. And it, you'll see there that the cellar is a usable room, it has windows in it. The first floor is the big room. And the three windows in the roof area is a large room on the third floor where the, is, can be a conference room or a, program room, whatever they decide to do it. And if we go to the inside, the next page, it shows the basement first. There again, the dotted line, to the right of that is the old building. Underneath the old kitchen is crawl space. The cellar in the old building is, is half dirt and half stone. We're moving the entryway to the far corner over on South Street. The new building in the cellar has the mechanical rooms for the heating, air conditioning, and whatever it is. And way on the far side, there is a room that can be used for programs, line dancing, or whatever they want. And behind the elevator, the little red square there is the elevator in the middle of the building. The first-floor plan is, the next page, you can see where the big room, elevator, and the kitchen are all in the new section. That is able to be locked off for any organization in Halifax to use for a function. We picked up two rooms in the old building, renovating it for office space. If we go into the second floor, we picked up a medical room. We made one unisex bathroom up there instead of two. We picked up one, two, three, four program rooms on the second floor. In the new section there, you see where the elevator is and the large room that can be used for meetings. We always have meeting problems at the town hall. And, and the next page, we get the parking layout. We're using the front yard for parking, and over in front of the water department, and some parking out back. The parking is going to be eligible enough for the daily use of the building. If there's a banquet in there in the big hall or something like that, they'll have to use parking at the town hall or the library. And as you can see, it's, it's going to be a multi-use building. It'd be available to other organizations in town. The seniors would be quite happy here, I believe. They have program space that they haven't had before. And the, one of the biggest things that, and one of the ones that's cost us a lot of money, is that we made the entire building handicap accessible. It is not handicap accessible now. So that, the codes in this, it's, it's run the cost up on us, but I think that if you vote yes for this tonight, it'll, it'll be a project that will, that will be, you'll be proud of in town, and we can finally put this to bed. Thank you.
Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Yes, sir.
Hi, folks. My name's Len Tassino, I'm a Finance Committee member. I actually had a dissenting vote. The reason for me, as I know it, the original amount was estimated somewhere around $2 million. We received the, the bids last week at an increase of 1.5, which is obviously a substantial difference from the original estimate. So there was some work done this week to figure out if this amount could fall under the levy, but I know for this budget year in particular, there was a great amount of detail put into the budget. There were several extra meetings, and I think the, the time span and the sheer increase over the original estimate was too much for me to overcome to make a recommendation to vote for. Thank you.
Discussion. Point of order? Rise to your point of order, sir, and please approach the mic.
Kevin Rogers, 25, ninth half. To the Finance Committee, are you saying that the additional money that you're asking, that is asked for in this article will fall beneath the 2.5 levy, and we won't have to go to overall town vote?
Finance Committee?
So the article that you voted on tonight was to place that underneath the levy limit and not to go to a debt exclusion. A debt exclusion would require a separate election, and what the Finance Committee, on a three-to-one recommendation, as Len pointed out, voted to recommend fitting the project underneath the levy limit, given the budget numbers that we looked at tonight, the FY '19 and FY '20, fiscal year '19 and fiscal year '20 estimates, and that we were comfortable, again, with leaving a cushion, as we've always, as we've wanted to at least as long as I've been on the Finance Committee, to ensure that we have a little bit extra in case of unforeseen circumstances.
Discussion. Yep. Yeah, please.
Lynne Dalski, Berndy Circle, 42-year resident here. I just wanted to make point of the problems we have now with the existing buildings. Something needs to be done. We have to do something. Somebody did bring it up. There's no way we could be in code for handicap. We have a ramp, but that's not enough. I can't even open the door by myself. I need somebody there to help me open the door. Most handicap accessible things have either a button you can push, or they have the automatic overhead doors. And I'm limited inside the building as well. If I am, a wheelchair person is too. It's very hard to move around inside that building. You know, you're bumping into things, and I don't want to have to keep saying to somebody, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, because I can't move about in there. There's a set of stairs in there that I couldn't even possibly climb, which limits me. I, you know, there's a quilting place upstairs. I have no access to that if I wanted to. We have an old lady that walks with a four-pronged cane, and she goes up those stairs, and that is so, so dangerous. Not to mention that I don't believe, Chief, that you could get a gurney up those stairs if there was a medical incident in there. Never, downstairs would be difficult enough, but upstairs, along with if there was ever to be a fire in the conditions that are in there. And I believe the only way out of there is down those stairs. There's not a second exit out of there. This town needs to do something about this. I mean, it's so difficult, and until you run into that you have a problem, you don't really realize what's involved into it all. Even the bathroom downstairs, the ladies have to go through this room and into this room, and that's difficult for a handicap person. You know, they do offer pedicure, cure things for them, and they have to sit on the toilet, and the person's on a stool in front of them. I mean, how humiliating is that? I mean, I've been in this town a long time, and so have a lot of other people. They deserve better. They really do. I'm all for the fire. I'm all for the police. I'm for the children, always was. I raised my children here. But the seniors deserve something, too. You know, we do take care of the children, and we need to take care of the seniors, too. I know it's expensive, but on the other hand, if some incident happened in that building, it's going to cost you a lot more. There's a fire, there's an injury, a death, and they all sit there, possible to happen. We deserve better than that. I think, you know, if, for you younger people, if it was your parents, how would you feel? How would you feel? You know? And it's, it's just wrong that we're in a building, it's a beautiful building as far as an old building goes. It's just not made to be a senior center. You know, the improvements, yes, but as it stands now, it's not, it's, it's a danger. I mean, it just really isn't. And so many other people are unable to go, they won't go there. I didn't go there for a while because I was, I was afraid I wouldn't be able to maneuver in there with my walker, you know? And finally, someone convinced me to go. And it's not easy, but I do go, and I enjoy the people. And I think so many more people would. So I hope the townspeople really, really think about this. Think about your parents. Think about yourself. Think about, you know, we put a lot of years in here, you know? Like I said, I've been here 42 years. I raised my kids. When I was younger, I was very mobile. I coached softball for this town for 15 years. I mean, you know, we, I've put my time in, too, and so have a lot of other people. And out of respect for the seniors, they, they need something, as well as anybody else. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, come on. Let's, uh, keep the applause down, please, please. Yep. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Jean Galant, Cranberry Drive. To the Finance Committee, you mentioned the cushion, Melissa. What is that figure, and what's the difference if we don't spend that? Thank you.
Finance Committee?
So we can always bring Charlie or Sandy up for the breakdown, but basically what we try to do, and we've done, for example, in the last budget cycle, was leave at least $300,000 as a cushion. Being extremely conservative, meaning not counting for all the income that we're likely to have off of, for example, the new ambulance billing service and the local mural receipts and all of that money that comes into the town, even without that, we can still set aside the $300,000 cushion and still be within the levy limit, which means that, which is why we didn't want to recommend a debt exclusion. We didn't want to add something on top of the tax, but we wanted to be able to fit it within and still not tax to the maximum that Prop Two and a Half allows. I hope that answers the question.
Yeah, follow-up, go ahead. Yeah, that's, yeah, please.
Okay, because those were different numbers from the last Finance Committee. We had talked about that if we spent this, then it wasn't going to be the 300, it was going to be like more in the range of 168, so that's different now?
That's correct. The last, when we met as a Finance Committee a week ago tonight, we did a quick back-of-the-envelope calculations to get a sense of, as a Finance Committee, what kind of a financing scheme would we be recommending to the town? Because that, we felt, was our charge, to explain to you, from our advisory position, how should we finance this? After a closer inspection by Sandy and Charlie and others into FY '19 and FY '20, and really going through the projections, the numbers that we had tonight at the meeting of the Finance Committee we had just before town meeting presented a much more optimistic picture. And again, that's being extremely conservative and not accounting for all of the income we could. So again, we're actually holding ourselves back even more off of the new projections to ensure that we leave our -- to ensure that we leave ourselves that cushion, because that's something that we, as the Finance Committee, are committed to, to give to you and to all of us as taxpayers.
Yes, ma'am.
Summer Shmalink, 32 Indian Path Road. So I'm looking at the design here, and I have a question. Is this the only design that was presented to you guys? Like, there isn't an alternate design? Because I'm just curious about the, if it was made, if Pope's Tavern was renovated, made larger and handicap accessible, which is clearly an issue, especially for our seniors. But without this multipurpose community room on the end, it's not, can you just talk about that?
I'd be happy to.
I wouldn't be Building Committee, yes.
Well, I mean, I touched upon it, but John can follow up if he would like. The architect, the majority of this cost is the renovation of the old building. So we did look into that, because again, we were all pretty shocked by this price. And we thought, what the heck? We need to stay within this budget. But we also wanted to be mindful of the expectation when you guys voted that 2 million. Like, what if, you know, it didn't even look anything like that? What you voted was what you voted. And so, John, you can touch upon the cost.
Yeah, well, the cost of the new renovation is fairly easy, but one of the prime things that the seniors wanted, right now, if they serve a luncheon, which they serve on a regular basis, they can fit maybe 15 people, 20 people, in that one little dining room. So this was a request of the seniors to have a good-sized room where they could put on a meal. And also, when we did that, if, say, the Cub Scouts wanted to have a Cub Scout banquet there, they could. And that's why we made the kitchen a little bit bigger too, because if you had a meal for 60 or 70 people, then you need the kitchen to support it.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Yes, sir.
Kevin Rogers, 25 Ninth Ave. I wanted to say that for many years, I've been a proponent of a new center for the seniors and have run up against the town not wanting to vote for it many times. We, a few years back, there was a proposal to take over all seasons, and it was going to be 1.5 for a brand-new building, turnkey and everything. And the town wouldn't go for it. I'm a volunteer with Meals on Wheels through the Center's center, so I'm very familiar with all the drawbacks to the center. My qualms are that the price has doubled, basically with this new ask, and the first brick has not been moved. And if you know anything about construction, there's always increases in the cost of doing a project, especially a project this big. So the 1.5 is probably not anywhere near what the final cost would be when it's all said and done. And I also would like to move for Australian ballot.
Yeah, let's, Ms. Moderator? Yes.
Mr. Moderator, can I speak to the last speaker?
Yes, sir. It's familiar.
As far as the cost goes, we're all in total shock over the whole thing. But in terms of securing the cost, this was a bid price, it was a qualified bid. We are building in a contingency for overages, just like we did here at the school when we found some extra rot. We had the money available to take care of it. I understand your concern. It is a big jump. Material costs have gone up 25% to 30% in just the last five months. This is only going to get worse, folks. We couldn't even get anybody to bid on the elevator, as I mentioned earlier. This is not going to get better. It's sort of, if we're going to do it, and obviously everyone's going to vote their own conscience, now is the time to do it. As hard as it is, this is it. We've done so much work for so many years, and to just walk away from it now and then have to start all over again and spend the money for a new design cost and a new place, it's not going to save anybody a dollar. I just don't see it happening.
Are we close to calling the question? Yes.
Mel Conroy, 7 Birch Road. I just wanted to question the veracity of the statement that this could be funded within the levy. With the, as the member of the School Committee mentioned, the volatility of special education costs, the recent loss of a major grant due to enrollment, the fire suppression system, which we previously voted on, that has not been discussed, that was funded under the levy. Is, are there specific increases in revenue that you can show us that will actually keep this with under the levy? Never mind the 300,000.
Try to find that out for you, Mr. Conroy, the Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, I'll ask Charlie Seelig, who has the numbers in printout. I have my handwritten notes here that we discussed tonight at the meeting, but he has the full printout to answer that question.
So the two places where we're being very conservative about is motor vehicle, where our revenues for fiscal '18 came in at 1.2. We're using a figure of 1.1 million dollars, so we're, in essence, stepping back by $100,000 from even the year we just finished, let alone fiscal '19 or fiscal '20. And we're seeing increases in our motor vehicle taxes every single year. The other area, as mentioned earlier, is on the ambulance billing. We're expecting to see a significant increase in our ambulance receipts going from doing the work in-house to using the outside consultant. That would boost, let's say, I think the fire chief mentioned, a couple hundred thousand dollars. We have the $300,000 in reserve that we are leaving on the table as that cushion that we've tried every year. So my estimate is certainly that we will be able to proceed, continuing the town's level of services in the future, even with voting a debt that isn't under the levy limit. So increasing it from 2 to 3.5, we'll still be able to pay these bills, the principal and interest on this debt, along with the town services in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Seelig. Follow-up? Mr. Conroy?
So we are funding this with projected revenues. We projected this project to come in at 1.7 million dollars, and it's currently 3.5.
We're not using projected revenues. That's my very point, in fact, that we have stepped back and said, even without going motor vehicle to the full extent, even without using all the ambulance receipts, we can fund this project within the levy limit and continue to fund the other town services. This is the time to do it. We're not going to see any better than we have today. We should be able to proceed with the operating budget as is.
Yes. Yep, hang on.
My name is Mark Roy, 473 Plymouth. I happen to be married to Kim Roy, one of the selectmen, just for the record.
In case there's any conflict of interest or, yeah.
Just in case somebody wants to mention it, in case they think it's, should have been mentioned. So for the record, the town approved 2 million, 2.1 million on this charge thing. We were, the town was already expected to pay $93.84 in extra taxes this year, if you agreed to that number. Now we want 3.5. It's $114. You're really looking for 21 more dollars a year from everybody here, according, $21. Is that not correct?
That's on average house.
On average house. So it's about a $20 bill, not 115, just for the record.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Karen Fava, Clyde O'Barsworth. I have two questions. First of all, I'd like to just say, I'd love for the seniors to get this project. They do deserve it, but can we afford it? That's the question. The 114.96 median tax bill, what's the average house that you're looking at? What's the price of that house that you're talking? Because that's not the average taxes. It's going to go increase.
Try to find out for you, Ms. Fava. Can we answer that question?
I believe it's about 300.
Yeah.
It should be approximately 300. If you wanted me to spend a couple of minutes on the math, I'd take the last page and work it backwards, because we know what the tax rate is right now. We can work it backwards. But it's going to be about 300,000 for a median or average house in town. Obviously, some people are going to pay more, some people are going to pay less.
Thank you, Mr. Seelig. Ms. Fava.
Thank you, Charlie. So most of the people, most houses in Halifax are 300,000-plus. So most people will be paying more. But this 114.96 figure that we're looking at, how many years is that, that we're going to pay that figure for?
Try to get any answer for you, ma'am. I think it's, I think it's listed in the back page. Is that correct?
Okay, so that's the first year on the 3.5.
So the first year on 3.5 for the average home, again, it's average. Yes, there are going to be houses that are more expensive than that, and there will be houses that are less expensive than that. So the average home, as Charlie stated, the median tax bill for the total project for the 3.5 is 115.96. The second year, it would be 112.32. The third year, 109.68. And that plan in the back will tell you, yes, for 20 years.
20 years. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir.
Mr. Moderator, Mark Roy, 473. So if the number was 2.1 million, starting at the top right now, would we be paying approximately $93 a year for the average home? If so, is it a $20 difference that we're talking about?
I think it's a little more than that. Am I wrong?
Hang on, hold on. Let's get that first question asked. Is that correct?
I'm going to have Charlie respond, because it'll be a little awkward.
Yes, they'll have, yeah, they'll have a discussion in the Roy household. It's, if I remember right, so we're talking three out of seven, so we're talking 42%. So we're talking maybe about $45 of that, something on that order, is the addition. So working backwards, it's maybe we're paying $70, we'd be paying another 44 or so. Is that right? Maybe it's a little closer, but it's, what you're paying is 3/7 with the 1.5, so about 42%. So maybe 48, 49, you know? But it's not the 20, I'm sorry to say. But it's roughly, let's say, 65, 50 would be about the difference. 65 before, 114 now, you're paying another $55.
A year.
Yeah, the 114. If we had done 2 million dollars, you would have paid a certain portion of the 114, because we already had approved the 2 million dollars. You're going to pay, not in addition to 114, but working backwards, let's say, with 65, 50. So $65 without the 1.5, you're paying 114 with the 1.5.
Per year.
Per year. And then it decreases. So the, and it's not additive. You're not paying 2.26 the second year. Your tax bill goes down those couple of dollars from 114, 112 the second year, then 109, 107, 104, keeps going down during the 20-year period.
Yep, okay. Can you just say, yes? Sure.
Amy Trup, Ten Hillside Ave. My question would be, if we hired a contractor of any kind, but in this case, an architect, and gave him a budget, why didn't the drawings come in with that budget? He knew the renovations needed to be done and the building needed to be done, should have been done within budget, and we wouldn't be going through this right now. Because if it was my architect and I was building the house, or whatever it was, I would say, that's double my budget. What, are you crazy? Like, what am I, just going to come up with this out of where? So my question is, is why didn't the architect get told, you need to build, you need to make the plans within this budget? And then I also want to know, if we voted on this, what was it, May of?
2016, 17.
Why are we just getting the plans now when the price is now? Like, if we were ready to go, I believe, then?
Try to get some answer for you, Ms. Trup. Thank you.
The plans that we voted on for 2 million dollars were from schematic plans. They weren't construction plans. And when you get into working from a schematic plan into construction plans, the state codes and everything take you places that you don't even want to be. And that, it just happens when you're dealing with an older building and you have to make it handicap accessible. It's twice as hard to do that than a new building that you're dealing with scratch. So that's basically, we went from schematics on a $2 million estimate to actual bid prices at, and the codes, the codes took us there.
Thank you. Follow-up question? Ms. Trup? Yeah, hang on. Hang on one second. Follow-up question.
Amy Trup again, Ten Hillside Ave. My question was, why didn't we have him build it within the budget? Schematics, he should understand what the codes were, because that's what he's trained to do. So again, why didn't we say, you didn't do your job, we hired you for? We said we had 1.7, not 3.5 or whatever the amount is. We don't have it. We're asking why it wasn't done correctly to begin with.
Get an answer for that?
Mr. Moderator?
Yeah, hang on. Get an answer for that. You have a question about why plans weren't available and why the architect wasn't held to those plans?
There again, to get a senior center that was usable and usable for all the other agencies in town that might use the building, the codes take us to a point where we couldn't build it for the 2 million. We put a larger kitchen on, and that took that kitchen from a basic kitchen to a commercial kitchen. And when you put a commercial kitchen on, it adds to the septic system to handle the extra use of the kitchen. Codes like that, it's just, it's just never-ending.
Okay. Excuse me?
This is just a follow-up. It's Amy Trup again. Again, larger things and all that, we're not, we gave a budget. This is what we need to start doing. We need to stay within the budget. We gave the budget. The budget didn't say we can spend more or make things. We have a budget, and that's where I think it needs to stay.
Thank you. Other questions? We close to calling the question?
I have a question.
Yes, question, please.
Did we, did we have anybody go out and, I understand they worked hard to get to this point that they're at now with, with the architects and the schematics and all the drawings, but did anybody ask or look into any type of grants or donations? Did anybody put anything out for, for this? Is there any money that's coming in to help with this project? Okay, because I understand they need more for the seniors. I don't want my parents to have to be able to climb upstairs that they can't climb. I understand the codes and everything need to be used in order. Did we look into modular housing, prefab, stuff like that, that we can just add to that building, make the room that we need, and cut the cost down a little bit so it's a little more comfortable that, that unfortunately, we're going to keep increasing our taxes to the point where people are going to get out of this town, because they can't stay here anymore, because they can't afford it? We brought up hours and time and how much Mr. Seelig works, and I work 55, 60, 70 hours a week. I bust my butt, too. I want my money to go to my family, my home, and updating my own things. I understand what the seniors want and what they need. Did we look into all the avenues possible to get these things done for them? Did we look into all the avenues possible to get these things done for them without getting to this extreme?
Could I address that?
Sure.
Yes, absolutely, we did. We absolutely explored grants. We've explored, we actually got $75,000, I believe, from the state at one point, which paid for a portion of the architect. So, we, I know that Bert Gainer, who's on our building committee, was pursuing funds that were coming, being earmarked in another fiscal year. So, we definitely, definitely have been looking everywhere that we can to offset any costs, not just now, previous to this.
Donations also?
Yes, yes, yes. So, we have the friends of the senior... So, we do have the friends of the senior center who have been raising money for many, many years. And again, we're limited to the prevailing wage and who works. Like, we wish we could all get together and just donate time to do it, but we are not able to do that kind of thing. Oh, no, no, no. It's a law that's in place that doesn't allow us to do that. I disagree with it, but it is... Yes, that's what I mean. Like, we can't have normal volunteers work on the building, sir.
What I would like to do at this point is, I didn't agree with some of the comments that were made earlier about we might have our positions and they're not changed. My sense of it is, we've had a lot of discussion around some of the pros and the cons of this issue. It's clearly an important one for the town, and you're all here, and you've all stayed here through some pretty warm weather and some challenging things. I'd like to ask at this point whether people are feeling comfortable that a lot of the issues that you have been aired, at least brought up, whether or not they've been answered to your satisfaction. I think we're going to only know that when we move for a vote. Yes, sir? Wait, wait, hang on one second. Well, two seconds. Yes, sir. Approach the microphone, and then you, sir.
Gordon Andrews, 244 Elm Street. So, when the finance committee looked at the budget, did you review the changes from the grant that we've lost at the elementary school for the upcoming year? Because I just found out about it, so I didn't know about it, so you probably didn't look at that. Do we review the contracts that we have in place for the schools? Because that's the biggest spender in our budget. I understand that the revenue that we're looking at is going to possibly be there. But when I sat on the finance committee, the projected number for the ambulance billing was $600,000, and it came in at $400,000. So, what happens is, for that money coming in, those bills go out to the residents of the town. So, when the residents don't pay the bill for the deductible or the transport in, the town's writing that off, and the taxpayers are paying that portion of the bill. So, I wouldn't be surprised if we don't see that revenue jump as much as is being projected. So, I would caution everyone on that. And I'd just bring up the fact that we made cuts to departments. We didn't restore those cuts and then make this review. And I'm concerned about putting it inside the levy. I know what we saw for special need. We're not allowed to be told where the students are, or what the placement is, or where those items are. But we know that two years, two fiscal years ago, we had people move in, and we saw a $200,000 increase. I think the $300,000 budget buffer that we have in there is necessary, but that's just for reason appropriate for that fiscal year. I'm really concerned about putting it inside the levy. I'd be much more comfortable if you're looking at a debt exclusion for this.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Sir? Still have your point? Yeah.
Kevin Rogers, 25 Ninth Avenue. As I said before, I've been in favor of a new senior center for many years and have been up at the microphone here saying the points for those new centers all the years that I have. I don't know why we wasted all that money on architect drawings and we come up with half-ass, pardon me, a bad result where we have a doubled budget. And we're not getting a new building. We're just making modifications to an old building and then adding a little bit more to it. If we're going to spend that kind of money, we should get a brand-new building, a metal building.
Okay.
And also, as regards to the kitchen, I, as I said before, I'm volunteer for Meals on Wheels, so I kind of see things that happens in the kitchen. And all the lunches that are provided pretty much are already made and brought to, a lot of them are brought to the senior center and then heated up from there. So, it's not like they're whipping up from scratch meals all the time and need a commercial kitchen, I don't think.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Not quite ready to move the question, are we? Okay.
Mary Gravenese, 98 Clyde O'Boazworth. I just have a question. If this passes, will the selectmen and the finance committee be 100% conscious when we go to town meeting next year that we won't have 45 pages of people asking for 50 grand for this, 100 grand for that? This is, it can't go on every year. And under the debt, I feel like we're going to be in the same, like Gordon said, we're going to be screwed. Because last year, when we came to the beginning of the town meeting, it was, "The sky is falling. We have no money. Everybody's going to, it's going to be a mess." And then, within a week, all of a sudden, we found money. So, every year, it gets worse and worse. The special ed is not going anywhere. It's going to get worse. So, I would like to know, you guys really conscious that all these articles that the finance committee recommends, all of them, and the selectmen put through, that they're going, but seriously, it's, there's never anything that nobody recommends or approves of, and everything at town meeting is approved and everything gets voted in. At some point, it's got to stop. And will you guys be conscious and aware of what you are recommending we spend our money on next year if this goes through?
I'm not sure. Okay, thank you. All right. Yes, finance committee?
Just very briefly, because I think the previous speaker raises an important point, and actually, in the meeting we had just before we came in here into the room tonight, we agreed that moving forward, we want to have a much more collaborative budget cycle process that brings all the department heads, all the workers in to discuss what the budget's going to look like every year. So, to that exact point, moving forward, because we know that we are placing, we know what we're recommending to place this under the levy limit, and we also realize that that's going to mean a much more collaborative process moving forward, and that's something that we articulated just before we came in here. So, we definitely agree with that sentiment.
Mr. Moderator? Yes, Mr. Garen? You have a question?
Thank you. So, as I mentioned, I was the dissenting vote on finance committee to not recommend. We did, as I mentioned, we found out the cost of the project just last week, and we were presented with the revenue estimates just prior to this town meeting. So, if you're asking my comfort level with the projections and how comfortable I feel coming back to town meeting next year, I'm not, which is why I chose to not recommend the warrant item.
All right, hold, please, hold it. Okay, it's been, the question or the motion has been made that we move to a vote. It's a two-thirds vote, and I am certain that I will not be able to get a voice vote. I am hopeful that we can get one through a standing count, if that's possible. If I can have the counters up.
Can I have my counters, please?
Excuse me? I'd like to move a standing one, an Australian ballot, beyond the fact that it would take a long time. I'm not sure it's needed. You folks have been very open and honest about your concerns, and I'd like to think it wouldn't be a problem for us to have a standing vote. So, I'd like to go there. So, for those people, as our counters are standing ready, who are in favor of moving this article, Article Number One, please stand and remain standing until the counters have finished their job. I'm sorry. What's that? I'm sorry. Hold on, please. Yes, if you're standing, you are supporting Article One. It requires, it will require a two-thirds vote. No, if you're standing, you are supporting and we're moving the article in the affirmative. It's a yes.
So, they're voting yes if they're standing?
That is correct.
It's not voting to move it. It's, they're voting yes if they're standing. That's not what we just said. So, anyone that's standing, you're voting yes for this article. Just make sure.
Correct. Sometimes, yes doesn't mean yes. Can we try to keep it quiet while we're doing this, please?
Okay, thank you. All the yes, people can sit down. If you do not want to approve this article, all the noes, please stand and remain standing to a finished counting.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator?
Yep.
I'm right here.
Where are we?
Deborah Shosham on Ponson Street.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, but a lot of people sat down before they were counted on that no vote, and they asked the people to come up and explain that to you when nothing got done. There was a lot of people that sat.
That sat down.
It needs to be recounted again.
Hold on one moment. I know I'm committing a huge salary for this, but I want hazard pay. I want hazard pay. And maybe some vacation time, too, which apparently is in short supply around here. All right. Barring any confusion, which we'll talk about in a moment, the vote, the way it came down, is we needed of the 191 present, 127 for a two-thirds. We did not receive that. There was 103, so the motion fails. Move on to Article, next article. Article 11. Please, if we can have order so we can finish our business before the town. Mr. Moderator? Folks, can we get it to be somewhat quiet? Mr. Garen?
I moved that the town vote to approve the changes in the fee schedule for the Department of Ways and Measures as shown in the article.
It has been moved. Do I get a second? Okay. Do we have a second? It's been moved, a second. And Mr. Garen, would you like to explain the article?
It's been a while since the Ways and Measures have gotten increased in Friday. It brings some revenue to the town, and I just think it needs to be passed at this time.
Hey, folks, in fairness to the other articles, let's kind of keep it down so we can finish the business of the town. Mr. Garen, I'm sorry?
It's been a while since there was an increase in the cost, and it brings revenue into the town. It's only gone up to that, so it's needed at this time.
Okay. All right. Recommendation of the finance committee?
The finance committee recommends...
In discussion on Article 11. I don't see any... Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. My apologies. You're in the front row. I don't have much of an excuse.
Tim Kandis, 166 Elm Street. Can you just explain this, so like, the increase, like, what's the implications on that? Does that, is that money that comes back to the budget for the town? Or is that something that's going to, like, hurt businesses? Can you just explain it a little bit more?
Mr. Garen, can you answer that?
It's revenue that comes back to the town. It doesn't hurt business...
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of Article 11 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 11 passes by majority. Next article.
Article eight.
Article eight has been proposed by the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Please.
I moved that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court for special legislation concerning speed limits in the town of Halifax as follows. Section one, notwithstanding the provisions of any general or special law to the contrary, the speed limit on all roads, streets and ways in the town of Halifax shall be 30 miles per hour unless otherwise posted.
As you're moving it, do we have a set, we have a move, a motion and a second, and the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Okay, you want to explain the article, Mr. Please.
Mr. Moderator, I'm going to have Mr. Seelig explain this.
Mr. Seelig.
Back a couple of years ago, the state had approved a change in the general laws that allows communities to put in a 25 mile an hour speed limit in what's called thickly settled areas that have a certain number of houses in a quarter mile. There is, the problem with that is twofold. One is that many streets in Halifax won't meet that definition, or at least under what we've heard from the police chief, what the state police see as that definition. And therefore, the speed limit won't be, couldn't be 25 even if we did it town-wide. The other end of the problem is this, when we try and post speed limits in Halifax, we're obligated to do what's called a speed study, in which, imagine 100 cars going down the road at whatever speed they're going to be going, the person's driving the car. We have to pick the 85th fastest car, and that's the speed limit. Right, exactly. So you can imagine if you were on 495, what the actual speed limit would be if it wasn't 65. Unfortunately, the same is true here in Halifax. A number of our roads are posted. Those roads would remain posted, so if it says 40, or 45, or 35, it's going to be staying that way. But in the cul-de-sacs, the subdivisions and such, the speed limit would become 30 miles an hour. We would have speed limit signs at the perimeter of the town, and if necessary, would put them in particular locations as a reminder that the speed limit, unless, unless otherwise posted, was 30 miles per hour. Now, I understand that some people may feel that's overly restrictive, and you can vote against this, but I, we get, and I know you see it on Facebook, and Boris Sleckman gets it, any number of complaints from people about people speeding in Halifax. But like I said, and people say, "Put a speed limit sign." I can't put a speed limit sign, not the one you want, because if I do it, it's 50 miles an hour, which is not what you wanted in the first place. You wanted it closer to 30. So this is a way of, at least a step towards this. It would still have to go to the state legislature for approval. It's going to be a multi-month process, no guarantees, but it's a way of handling our speed limit problems. Otherwise, you know, we'll leave things the way they are, and we'll just try and deal with them as best as we can.
Thank you, Mr. Seelig. Questions, discussion? Yes, sir.
Alex Dejeanay, 70 Stoneyware Road. I just want to point out that it's not the town's job, it's the state's job. The state does those things for a reason, and that you, it's, the town's not more important than the state. You guys just got to consider that.
Other discussion? No. Seeing no further discussion? All right, yes, sir.
Hickright, 1 Brandeis Circle. Mr. Moderator, I live on the corner of Brandeis Circle and Oak Street. I can hear the train crossing, the outbound train crossing at 58. When cars are going by my house, which is in a thickly settled area, which is 30 miles an hour, and they are going upwards of 45 to 50 miles an hour, something has to be done on this road. The police do what they can do to stake out as much traffic as possible, with the technology of Waze and GPS and everything. Unfortunately, these lawbreakers have an upper hand. But something has to be done along these routes that the train people take to get to the train station in Halifax. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Just for the record, your T-shirt's making me really hungry right now.
So you can see it?
Yes, I can. Actually, the-
Bob McCarthy, 610 Mon Ponset.
Reese's, who wouldn't see, yeah, go ahead. Sorry, sorry for the digression.
Quick question. How many signs are going to have to be placed around the town for this? How many signs are going to have to replace, be replaced that are missing for the speed limit signs now? And what is the cost going to be?
Okay.
Thank you.
See if we can find an answer to your question, sir.
We don't have an answer.
Oh.
The only roads that will be taken care of by the town are the town-owned roads. The state-owned roads is responsible for those. So some of the streets, I have no idea what the cost of a stop sign or a speed sign is today.
I might, I might interject. Hang on one second. I just might interject. The question, I think, is if you're suggesting that any unposted areas are 30 miles an hour, you have to alert the drivers to that, would that be done on the outskirts of all the town, all the roads coming in and out? I think that's the, if I'm not, want to put words in your mouth, but you want to rephrase or re-ask your question?
Right, I'm asking for the price of the signs to the outskirts of town, and also, like, signs that are missing, that I know are 35, 40 now, the sign isn't there, is that just dropping down to 30 miles an hour automatically? So if I get pulled over, am I going to win the ticket?
If you check the town bylaws, in fact, you're going to win in court on that case, because inside the bylaws, there's a section specifying, in fact, where speed limits are and where they should be posted. If there are signs that are missing, by all means, please contact the Highway Surveyors' office or the Sleckman's office, and we'll work to get them replaced. But they need to be, if they're missing, they need to be replaced no matter what we do. Even if we vote against this, we need to spend money on replacing those signs. My guess is probably about a dozen around the perimeter of the town. We're talking the major numbered routes, and maybe other places like Elm Street, which, while not a major route in terms of a route number, probably should be an area where, considering how many people come into Halifax, it needs to be posted. You'll, for instance, you've got the city of Brockton, they don't post that sign at every single street on the border of Brockton. What they'll do is post it on the major streets leading into Brockton.
Thank you. Okay. Other questions? Seeing none? Like, all those in favor of Article eight signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to try that again, just for the heck of it. I know that John Bruno used to do that, so hang on a second. All those who are in favor of Article eight signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Well, I actually going to go with the no on that one, I'm sorry. So, Article, voice, Article eight fails by voice vote. Next article.
Article seven.
Article seven.
It did not pass.
Mr. Moderator.
The last article, that is. Article seven? Yes, Mr. Garen?
Board's moved to pass over Article seven.
It's been moved, can I get a second in passing over? It's been moved and seconded, Finance Committee's recommendation.
The Finance Committee recommends to pass over.
Any discussion? All those in favor of passing over Article seven signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Article seven is passed over.
Article three.
Article three.
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Roy.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000 for line 72 dispatch services of Article Four of the annual town meeting of May 14, 2018, to be added to the 135,000 previously appropriated for the purpose of the, and the total will be 155,000.
Moving, it's been moved and seconded. Ms. Roy, would you like to explain?
Two years ago, the town of Halifax recognized a substantial savings when we joined a regional dispatch center. At the annual, the annual cost of this service is $150,000 per year. At the annual town meeting, we approved 135,000, but that amount represented cost minus a grant, a state grant that we had received the year before for consolidation costs. This year, we no longer qualify for the grant, and this amount represents the difference in the cost, and the additional 5,000 is budgeted in case we should need to replace any of the radios that communicate with Duxbury.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Any discussion on the article? Yes, please. Hang on, your second, I'm sorry. Get lined up.
Kevin Rogers, 25 Ninth Avenue. I know I'm probably not going to have a position at Mills on Wheels when I go there on Thursday, but I'm still going to comment on this article. I wanted to find out when it was realized that we weren't going to get the grant and, for this particular article, and it was going to increase our costs for that, because we were, we were told when we went to the new dispatch service that it was going to cost, it was going to save us a lot of money.
It did, and this particular grant was specific to the move, and we found out after town meeting, or else we would have budgeted the proper amount. I promise you that. But we, we are indirectly receiving grants that go directly to Duxbury, and it's definitely saved us a substantial amount of money.
Another question? Yes, Amy?
I just have a question about it, because I had an experience where, I mean, I'm sorry, Amy True, Penn Hill, side out. I had an experience with it where I went to the police station, it was sort of scary because the phone kept hanging up, and you had to like, and sometimes in a bad situation, that can be really scary. So I was wondering, have we looked at bringing it back and giving employment to, just because it's kind of scary, it's not really that safe to not have anybody manned at the police station, and you're showing up, and you're scared, and you're telling somebody something, and you get cut off.
Perhaps Chief Broderick could verify this, but we don't normally, we have not received any complaints, at least in the Sleckman's office, that there isn't anything that is working, and so certainly I'm glad that you brought this up, and we certainly will look into whatever that incident is.
Chief.
Mr. Moderator, we're not, I'm not familiar with her particular incident. There is a Verizon problem that we've been working on in the last few days. It's an outside line that has nothing to do with our building or anybody else's. It's being worked on, it comes and goes. The phone, as far as I know, always works. It was a bad connection sort of sounding problem. But again, if there's an issue, by all means, let us know. This Verizon is, you know, out of our hands at this point, has nothing to do with dispatch or our building. So we're working on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Seeing none? All those in fit, I'm sorry, to some, go ahead. You had to raise your hand and speak out. Come on. Thank you, I'm sorry. I wouldn't want to have you not be able to speak, that wouldn't be my, my desire.
Barbara Sheehan, 252 Twin Lakes Drive. I've had occasion to call 911 because I have breathing problems, and I am not happy with it going to Duxbury. It seems that the phones ring a little longer, it takes a little longer to get the information to them, and then you have to be transferred to Halifax. The EMTs who come there terrific, and I've had nothing but good experiences with them, but I do not like having to call, my call to go to Duxbury. Thank you.
Understood.
Mr. Moderator, I'm going to ask the fire chief to come to the mic and just explain this process, because that, again, is new to us. We have seen response times improve, but, chief.
Since we've made the transition over to what they call the rock, or the dispatch center out of Duxbury, we haven't noticed any problems like the previous speaker spoke about. In fact, we've seen a reduction in response times. What happens when a call, a 911 call is made, they have multiple people who are working in their call center. One will take the call and speak to the 911 caller. And what you might have experienced is that person will stay on the line and speak to you throughout the duration of your emergency. While that's happening, another employee at the dispatch center is listening to that conversation and dispatching the appropriate apparatus. So we have not noticed any, it might seem like they're keeping you on the line longer, like they're talking to you longer, but that's because they have the additional resources available to do that. I was a proponent of it. One of the issues that we had doing it in-house is that we only had one dispatcher operating that, our 911 center, dispatching for both police and, police and fire, and receiving the 911 calls, and dispatching the apparatus. That's a lot for one person to do. While we might not be the busiest system in the world, when we do have a car accident, there's the fire departments making requests, the police departments making requests, there's multiple calls coming in, we just didn't have the resources available to handle that effectively. And I think by making this move, it, A, has saved the town money, and B, has helped to, I mean, the people who worked here did a great job, and they gave 100%, but it's further professionalized the service, only because they have-
Mr. Moderator, we're not, I'm not familiar with her particular incident. There is a Verizon problem that we've been working on in the last few days. It's an outside line that has nothing to do with our building or anybody else's. It's being worked on. It comes and goes. The phone, as far as I know, always works. It was a bad connection sort of sounding problem. But again, if there's an issue, by all means, let us know. This Verizon is, you know, out of our hands at this point, has nothing to do with dispatch or our building. So we're working on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Seeing none? All those in favor? I'm sorry. Some, go ahead. You had to raise your hand and speak out. Come on. Thank you. I'm sorry. I wouldn't want to have you not be able to speak. That wouldn't be my, my desire.
Prashen, 252 Twin Lakes Drive. I've had occasion to call 911 because I have breathing problems and I am not happy with it going to Duxbury. It seems that the phones ring a little longer, it takes a little longer to get the information to them and then you have to be transferred to Halifax. The EMTs who come there terrific and I've had nothing but good experiences with them, but I do not like having to call, my call to go to Duxbury. Thank you.
Understood.
Mr. Moderator, I'm going to ask the fire chief to, to come to the mic and just explain this process because that, again, is new to us. We have seen response times improve, but Chief?
Since we've made the transition over to what they call the rock or the dispatch center out of Duxbury, we haven't noticed any problems like the previous speaker spoke about. In fact, we've seen a reduction in response times. What happens when a call, a 911 call is made? They have multiple people who are working in their call center. One will take the call and speak to the 911 caller. And what you might have experienced is that person will stay on the line and speak to you throughout the duration of your emergency. While that's happening, another employee at the dispatch center is listening to that conversation and dispatching the appropriate apparatus. So we have not noticed any, it might seem like they're keeping you on the line longer, like they're talking to you longer, but that's because they have the additional resources available to, to do that. I was a proponent of it. One of the issues that we had doing it in-house is that we only had one dispatcher operating that, our 911 center, dispatching for both police and, police and fire and receiving the 911 calls and dispatching the apparatus. That's a lot for one person to do. While we might not be the busiest system in the world, when we do have a car accident, there's the fire department's making requests, the police department's making requests, there's multiple calls coming in, we just didn't have the resources available to handle that effectively. And I think by making this move, it A, has saved the town money and B, has helped to, I mean, the people who worked here did a great job and they gave 100%, but it's further professionalized the, the service only because they have the manpower, the resources to do it. The way we're handling 911 calls now from a cellular phone is completely different. Our cellular phone calls, in the prior, we're being, we're going to the state police barracks, then being rerouted back to Halifax. We're part of a system now where our 911 calls made from a cell phone are going directly to our dispatch center. That makes a huge impact on response times, especially today when most 911 calls are coming in through a cell phone. So if anyone does have a problem or has an experienced a problem with it, by all means, reach out to myself or Chief Broderick. We will address that immediately. There could always be situations where there's a kink, that could, that could happen when we manage it in-house. But overall, it has been a very positive experience and I think the way it's being handled is, has been great, at least from the fire department's aspect.
Thank you, Chief. Other comments? Seeing none? I'd like to ask for all those in favor of passing Article 3 signify by saying aye? Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Came to say the word now. All right, Article 5. You closing in? Last article. Two-thirds vote required. Article 5 is moved by the-
Mr. Moderator.
Selectmen? Yes, sir. Mr. Milius.
I move that the town vote to transfer from the General Stabilization Fund the sum of $35,000 to repair and replace the handicap ramp at the town hall, including but not limited to any engineering and construction costs.
It's been moved and seconded. Would you like to explain that, Mr. Milius?
Actually, no, but I'll try. If you've had fun so far, this one's a stinker, folks. What happened just prior to town meeting, prior to the warrant actually being mailed out is we had an incident at the town hall. An incident's too strong, but we had an event where we realized that the railing system, at least on one side of the handicap ramp on the parking lot entrance door, which is the main door, failed. Not completely, but failed enough. We've executed some emergency repairs that are considered ordinary repairs. In other words, you can replace a baluster, you can replace a couple of balusters, secure them a little bit better, but there's only so far you can go before you're mandated to bring everything up into today's code compliance, which requires a lot of other things. Spoke with the building inspector. He took a look at it. We're all pretty sure we can maybe get by until next town meeting. The problem is that we're going to try to look at it a little bit harder without getting too invasive. If it looks like we're going to have to do something with it sooner, then we have to kind of go out there. We have to get an engineer. It has to be designed. We're talking about maybe a temporary ramp while the ramp's being either replaced or major repairs. We're hoping we can avoid that, but we don't know. So what we're doing is we're looking to see, and $35,000 seems like a lot of money, but based on what things keep going for, I'm not all that sure. We're not going to spend anything if we don't have to. We're just looking for the authorization to do it. We have handicapped employees. We certainly have handicapped residents. We have to make it safe. We're on notice that there may be a problem. We have to take due notice thereof and govern ourselves accordingly. We want to reduce any potential liability exposure to the town and that's what we're doing. We're trying to do this. We're trying to keep it as simple as possible, but we just don't know.
Moved and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends, but as the committee would like to express, we understand that we're voting on this without plans. However, we do feel that the liability risk is great enough and the fact that the Finance Committee would not be able to make a reserve fund transfer later on to account for a necessary expense because we knew about it beforehand, that we are recommending the $35,000.
Okay. Moved, seconded, the Finance Committee's recommendation. Are there any, just any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor of moving Article 5 signify by voting yes, aye? Any opposed? Okay, majority, oh, it's a two-thirds. It's not. Okay. Let me do that again, only because I want to remind you, this is a two-thirds vote. So I'm going to need a two-thirds ear to this. So let me ask you again, and I apologize, my fault, not yours. All those in favor of Article 5, please signify by saying aye? Any opposed? I'd say we're going to have a two-thirds vote. So, motion passes. That's the last article before the town meeting, as I understand it? A motion to adjourn is always appropriate?
So moved, Mr. Moderator.
It does not need to be seconded. All those in favor of adjourning? Thank you all.